They need to get together and let our voices be heard.
This is Buffalo What's Next. I'm Jay Moran.
I'm Bridgette Jaipal Valenza.
I'm Dave Debo.
And I'm Thomas O'Neil White.
After May 14th, how can we afford not to talk about race?
About education, about segregation, about humanity.
Since the dawn of this nation, racial violence has existed. The way we have designed our society has a big hand in what occurred in that Tops Market.
In suburban areas everywhere, we must work and teach our children.
We need to make sure that we put more funding in our programs that help prevent gun violence and more money into art.
If we're gonna have some real healing, we've gotta have space to tell some uncomfortable truths.
I'm host Thomas O'Neil White, and with me today to talk Black history in Buffalo is historian Michelle Ragland. Michelle, thank you for being here today.
Thank you for having me.
The Making Black America Through the Grapevine Series has been playing on PBS, giving non-Black America a glimpse into different facets of Black life in America, from Reconstruction to now. What are your thoughts on the series so far?
I find it interesting. I really like this series a lot. I am a fan of Louis, sorry, Louis Gates, and the information that he put out there is just basically information that I kind of researched myself locally, and I just found it so fascinating because it is our African-American history.
It is, and what do you think connects or what do you think is relatable from the series when we talk about informal economies, grassroots organizations, and cultural innovations that African-Americans have made since Reconstruction? How's that relatable to the Black experience in Buffalo? Is it all encompassing? Is it all the same, or is Buffalo a little different?
To me, it's encompassing because, you know, once the migration started, we had two phases in the first phase. So, a lot of people migrated to Buffalo from the South. And so, everything that he covered on the series was a Buffalo experience as well. So, we had a lot of people coming here, you know, looking for a better life, looking to contribute to the economy, to do better, to do much for the community once they got here.
And I wanted to ask you about the impact, the social impact, the economic impact of those two northern migrations of African-Americans. How did that impact look in Buffalo?
The impact looked great. I mean, it was, a lot of people that came here came here for jobs. They came here primarily to get a job, to have a better life, housing, and probably I could say escape like the segregated South, to move in neighborhoods, and to set up a community and to build on it. And that's what I found when I did research Buffalo's African-American history. A lot of people came here and they set up the community. They set up primarily in the Ellicott District. They set up neighborhoods. They contributed to the economy. We start building, you know, within the neighborhood, like, you know, stores, grocery stores, barber shops, you name it. There was a lot of growth within the Black community during the first phase of the migration, or northern migration.
And that helped create the Black middle class?
It surely did. It surely did.
And anything of interest, any interesting invention or innovation that came from Buffalo's African-American community back in those days? I mean, I'm talking, you know, between like the 1920s through the 1950s?
Oh, yes. There was many inventions. There was a lot of people that came here. So, it was like Cornelius Ford, you know? He was the first African-American to head up the cattle division. There were so many people that came here and prospered in the community and set up, like I said, different type of businesses. And so, I'm trying to think off the top of my head.
Who was the inventor of chicken wings? I know there's a lot of differing opinions on that.
Well, that's John Young. He did start with the invention of, well, it was the Mambo Sauce, okay? So, it was the Mambo Sauce, the wings, the whole wing that he invented here. He started here, I should say. And so, yeah, he did start the chicken wing, the Mambo Wing, the Buffalo Wing.
The Buffalo Wing, yes.
Yes, he did. Actually, he had some type of, like, I would say friendship or with the person that invented the wing, that, you know, the Ankerbar, that family, he was a frequent visitor of John Young.
Okay.
So, yeah, so he did invent the chicken wing here. I should say that covered it with the Mambo Sauce as a favorite in the community.
The Great Migration, the second part, how important was the Negro Motorist Green Book in that second Great Migration North? And what's Buffalo's part in that?
Oh, it was very important because, you know, when many people traveled across the United States and they wanted to stop, and of course, when they traveled and they came to Buffalo, they had to make sure that they were in a safe environment. They had to make sure that they found safe accommodations. And so, Buffalo's role was to actually, you know, be another northern city that made sure that, you know, people had a safe environment once they traveled to the area. And so, you know, a lot of people that came here was able to, you know, have accommodations, go to stores that were, you know, that they felt safe going to, barber shops, hair salons, hotels, nightclubs, you know, several different places.
Yeah, and even back then, you know, Buffalo was a city of good neighbors.
Yeah, it was.
Once again, you're listening to Buffalo What's Next. I'm Thomas O'Neil White, here with historian Michelle Ragland, Buffalo and Western New York African-American History Group on Facebook. This is something that you developed?
Yes.
Tell us a little bit about that.
It's a social media group. I started it back in 2014. I just started researching a lot of Buffalo African-American history, and I thought, what better way to, you know, connect with people would be on social media, on Facebook? And so, I've primarily just, you know, researched a lot of African-American history here in Buffalo in person. Like, I'll go to, you know, places such as the Buffalo History Museum, anywhere that I can obtain information. If I have to go to the records, the deed of records, I'll go there. And I'll just research online, or I'll just, you know, do a lot of research. I'll, you know, look at people like that I know historically were doing the research prior to me, like Monroe Fordham, Eva Noes. She was a historian and a nurse, the first African-American nurse to graduate from nursing school here in Buffalo.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. So, she did put out a book back in 1986. So, I used that book as my, you know, my research, you know? I bought the book. She made the book. She put it together, and she kind of laid the foundation kind of for me, I would say, to just know who the people were, because a lot of the information in her book is information that, you know, is from the like 1920s, 1930s, 40s, 50s.
Yeah, because I was gonna ask you, how far back does your research go? And how much time do you put into it?
Well, I go back, my research go way back to when I could pinpoint the first African-American to the area. So, that's like in the late 1700s.
Wow.
Joseph Hodge.
Wow.
African-American. He came here. And I know there were several other people, but for the reason that he became popular, he was like a surveyor with the man that discovered, I can't think of his first name, Cleveland, the city of Cleveland, Ohio.
Okay.
So, he did a surveyor for him. He opened a trading post with this Native American wife. So, he had, you know, he did a lot of different things in the area before he left and headed down to the Southern Tier unless he was traced possibly in Canada. So, he goes back to the 1700s, late 1700s, and then the 1800s. I call that period the Great Escape, like when a lot of people were escaping slavery bondage. So, I go back that far.
What's your favorite thing to research? I mean, you're obviously researching history, but is there a certain something within the history locally that you are always going back to?
Yes, the migration, the Great Northern Migration. I continuously go back to the migration because that's a period of time when a significant, I would say, the largest percentage of African-Americans had moved to Buffalo. So, a lot of people moved here during that time, during the first phase and the second phase.
Yeah, for people who don't know, can you break down the first phase and the second phase? Like, what the timeframes?
Yeah, sure. So, the first phase started around, I would say, the second decade of the 20th century, so around 1915. So, 1915 to about, like, right before World War II. So, that was like the first phase. So, I would say a good 30 years of migrating. And then, as the war started and then more people started migrating, so I would say the war around like 19, the early 1940s, so like 1940 until the 1960s.
Okay. And the reasons for those migrations were because manufacturing jobs and such were opening up? And to, obviously, flee Jim Crow racism?
Definitely, definitely. Industrialization.
Yes.
And Jim Crow. So, the jobs, the jobs were significant to why people were moving here. The entire family, you know, the first father may have come, or the, you know, brother may have come, or the sister, you know? And everybody would, you know, say, hey, come on up to Buffalo, you know? And I call Buffalo the, you know, the city by the lake. But it was one of the cities that were the gateway to freedom, you know? During that, well, during slavery. But then, in the phase of the northern migration, I would say Buffalo was the city to escape the Jim Crow, the segregated South. So, yeah.
I wanted to ask you about these clubs, the Vermillion Room and other clubs like it. I know that's more recent history in Buffalo, but it's history nonetheless. Tell me about the Vermillion Room. What was that? What was it?
It was a nightclub, actually. It was a nightclub that was upstairs over the skating rink. So, it was over New Skate Land. So, the saying was, you go up to get down. You're going upstairs to get down and have fun, have a good time. And so many people enjoy themselves. I'm talking about celebrities. I'm talking about our local community here. And then you had, you know, Rick James was from here. So, when he would come to town, the Stone City Band, you had Stevie Wonder. You had so many different people that went up to get down here in the African-American community. And so, yeah, that was the party scene for Buffalo. It was where you had a good time. And the owner was Trenis Goggins. He owned that nightclub. So, he definitely did a lot for the community with that nightclub, you know? It's very popular, and people have so many memories of having a good time in that club.
Are there other places, were there other places, like the Vermillion Room, that mainly African-Americans congregated, but that also brought in people? I mean, obviously, Rick James is from here, but the Stevie Wonders, the big music artists around, that came around town to Buffalo to party?
Definitely. It would be, I would say, the Bon-Ton. The, oh my goodness, so many, so many clubs. I know one was the Bon-Ton, and the other was the Playa Lox. What was that? The club that was over there by Jefferson? The Pine Grill, that's what it was. People probably were like, how could you forget the Pine Grill? I'm like, huh? The Pine Grill, everybody know about the Pine Grill, the Revolot. I'm talking about BB King.
Wow.
I'm talking about so many people that came to that club, you know? I'm trying to think right now because there were so many back then that came to the Pine Grill, the Revolot. And they would call that the Jazz Circle, like that area right there, East Ferry. And Jefferson, that was like the Jazz Circle because you had the Pine Grill. And then down the street right there, you had the Revolot. And so, you had like Billy Nunn, local talent playing there. And then you had people that, like, I would say, like George Benson. You had so many people, Al Green, Aretha Franklin, you know? There were so many people, and then you had your local talent. So, it was so many celebrities that were trying to, you know, you know, get notoriety, to become big, to, you know, to make a name for themselves. They came there. And so, yeah, it was a little triangle, circle, Jazz Circle.
You are listening to Buffalo What's Next. I'm Thomas O'Neil White, here with historian Michelle Ragland. Michelle, what sparked your interest in local African-American history? Are you from Buffalo?
Yes, I am.
Born and raised?
Born and raised.
What sparked that interest?
I think the fact that I see a lot of history here in Buffalo. And as a little girl growing up, I didn't know about a lot of the history that I had actually researched. And so, once social media became, you know, the place where everybody was going on to, you know, research or Google and look at information, it became so easy to look up information. And so, I was looking at information and always, honestly, I'll go back to my youth. I always loved history. I always loved social studies. I mean, I was just, that class was just so easy. I didn't know why. My teacher, I guess she knew, why was it so easy? Why could I just pass it? Like, because it was like, it didn't feel like work. And so, once I got on social media, like a lot of people, I saw that, you know, here in Buffalo, I'm like, wow, you know? I want to know what's going on or what happened to us back, you know, way before I was born. And so, that's when I started doing a lot of research. And I must tell you, I'm very surprised at all the information that I'm able to research because it's not, some of it's not even out here that people know about. Some of it's unknown or forgotten. So, you know, I do my best to try to make sure we don't forget anybody, forget any places, people, and, you know, contributions that the African-American community made to Buffalo.
Are you worried at all that we may be losing that history or forgetting that history?
I do worry because you have to research. You have to take the time. You have to make time. And I'm not gonna, I'm gonna be honest. It is time-consuming for me. I take time. It is time to do this. But I just want to make sure that the information is told and shared with the next generations and even the generations that are here now. Because some people hear about their history and they don't know. I look information up. I don't know, you know? Sometimes I'm surprised. I'm like, sitting there like, ah, I'm shocked, you know? But that's what keeps me going. That's what inspires me.
How are you gonna pass that history on, though? How are, to have a kid maybe 12, 13 years old kind of have that history ingrained in themselves as they move forward in this area? And, you know, kind of have an understanding of, like, this is who I am. This is where, this is what I came from. How do you do that?
I want to make sure, you know, put it all in book form, you know? Put it in the book, you know, let the kids read the book. Hopefully, if the school, you know, get on a level with the school system here, perhaps maybe put something out that could be in the curriculum for the schools about Buffalo's Black history, so the kids will know. Because if it's there and it's part of the curriculum, the kids will know, you know? But of course, like I said, a book, even a coffee table book or a book of, you know, just to let the kids know the history of Buffalo's African-American community, and yes, workshops, you know? I'm open to that, you know, going to do presentations, talking to the kids in the schools, whatever it takes, just to make sure that the kids know their history here.
When you've done presentations, what does that look like? What's your audience?
I went, I had a presentation. I joined other people here locally. I was asked, I was invited. So, it's like you go talk to different people at different functions, venues. I was invited to talk to the Jesse Clipper posts regarding Jesse Clipper. I did research on him. So, the club, they asked me to come and talk and share and just, you know, talk about Jesse Clipper, go back and do his biography, and talk about his beginnings, his humble beginnings, until he was the first African-American here in Buffalo to die in World War I. But before he was even, you know, in the military, he was a performer. He was a valet performer with his wife. So, he was performing with them, talking about great people, well-known people back in the early 1900s and the 10s and the teens. But then he came to Buffalo and he got connected with the Colored Musicians Club, and he joined the military. And unfortunately, he went over there to, you know, fight in World War I, and that's when he died. And so, he's buried there, yeah.
How important is a place like the Colored Musicians Club? A lot of history there.
Very important, a lot of history because there was form, because the African-Americans were not, people were not able to, you know, were invited to come to other locals, you know? And not, you know, able to go there because of, you know, discrimination. And, you know, so they had to build their own. And so, when they did that, that set the tone for the next, I would say. So, they started like in the teens, the late 1900s, well, the teens and early 20s. And so, they're still open now. They're still going strong.
Unbelievable.
They had all these people that come here, you know? So, it was nothing for like Duke Ellington or, you know, Cab Calloway or Ella Fitzgerald, all the, some of the faces you see on the outside, on the--
On the Freedom Wall.
Not on the wall, but on the Colored Musicians Club itself.
Yes.
You see these people because these people were here in the Colored Musicians Club performing, you know? I know, and some people say, oh, it was, you know, because they had, you know, because they had, to me, and I go back and I research and I read, they had a good time in there. They were having a good time in there, you know? They were like, okay. And even like Louis Armstrong, his wife, you know, performed here at the Little Harlem. He performed at the Vendome, the Club Vendome, where the Corb Brothers owned the Vendome, the Vendome nightclub. It was on Clinton. So, then it moved on Sycamore. But you had Sammy Davis Jr., you had Louis Armstrong. You had so many people that came through Buffalo and performed in these places.
Yeah, African-American entertainment royalty, basically.
You could say the royalty, like Lena Horne was in the color, I mean, was in the Little Harlem.
Wow.
I mean, it was nothing for all of these people to come to Buffalo and come to Buffalo and perform. And I'm talking about some of them were doing shows for like, okay, here you are, you come in here. Oh, my week here in Buffalo. Even in the 1970s, you had Dizzy Gillespie. He's performing, you know? And so, it's like that royalty, that royalty we had and the people that came through Buffalo and performed, you know? The Royal Arms, they had so many people. Monk was at the Royal Arms. You know, you had so many people. It's like, I could just put all these people down and just tell you, all these people that came here, where they performed. And, you know, you have to think about the community, who was coming out to see them? You know, the advertisements and how people were, and some people were remembering. They were like, oh, yeah, I remember. I was there. I went there that night when he came. I have several people that are alive today, and they reminisce and they remember. They were like, Josephine Baker, yes, she came, and she was driving down William Street. Oh, and Billie Holiday, yes, she came, and she was over there. And she walked across the street on Jefferson. And her husband, at the time, Louis McKay, owned a little delicatessen over here. These people came here, and, you know, they left their footprints. And so, it's up to us to just make sure we let everyone know that, you know, we had a strong presence. We had royalty. We had, you know, good people here.
You must get that a lot, that, oh, I remember this, you know? So-and-so was here, and we went to see them. How's your work has to be well-received by the older generation these days? That's gotta be, you know, we call it like a throwback.
Yeah. It is. It is. I've met several great people, people that I wouldn't have never probably met if I hadn't started doing the African-American history and the research and going back and, you know, researching the information, bringing it back out, bringing it up, making it a topic of conversation. So, a lot of people are coming to me, and they're like, Michelle, you know? They're happy to hear it. They want to hear more. And they reminisce, and they actually fill in some blanks for me, you know? Some information that I don't know because I wasn't alive, you know? They were here. And they'll fill it in and tell me, oh, yes, we went here and we did that. Oh, and, you know, oh, yes. And I'm like, are you kidding me? Because, you know, as I was growing up, none of these things were in existence anymore, so.
The last thing I want to ask you is something I try to ask all my guests, and it's very broad. From your point of view, what does Buffalo need?
Well, I guess what we need is just to continue trying to thrive and do better. Me being a historian, I'm gonna just be honest and say, if we could just get some of the old school back, we need to bring that back again, you know? Especially in the African-American community.
Old-school sensibilities?
Exactly. The sensibilities, the things that worked before, like the migration, the unification, the community building, having, you know, our community thrive, you know? And having all the classes, you know, living together, making, you know, making everything established for ourselves in the community. I just think we need to just unify, just try to do better, you know? Get our community back to where it was. Because it's no secret, you know, we're in the North, and you hear, oh, the city's up north. This is what happened after the jobs left, like, the plants closed. So, a lot of the population left. And so, we are having a surge in populations. We have, we're having a lot of immigrants moving to the area and they're building, you know? But as a whole, overall, I think it should be, everybody should just, you know, try to do what they can to just make Buffalo grow again, you know? Be that Buffalo that it used to be where, you know, people came here and it was like, you know, it was a norm. Because now if you say, oh, this person or that person came here, it's like, who? Who's coming here? What? Before, it was like the norm for so many people to come through and, you know, just--
Because there was so much opportunity.
There was opportunity. There was jobs, you know? There was entertainment. There was things to see. So, if we can just collectively get that back, I think we would do good.
You're listening to Buffalo What's Next. Thomas O'Neil White in with historian Michelle Ragland. Michelle, thank you again for being with us today.
Thank you for having me.
And stay tuned for more Buffalo What's Next.
Do you absolutely love Masterpiece, Antiques Roadshow, PBS NewsHour, great performances, and other amazing shows on W-NED PBS? But you're not always in front of your TV when they're on. Don't miss them. You can stream the channel live wherever you are in Western New York by visiting wned.org/live or use the W-NED PBS app.
WBFO is your home for trusted news about your community. And WBFO The Bridge connects music and community. Hear local music from bands like Pharaoh from Buffalo, Tedesco Knows Best from Niagara Falls, and Stress Dolls from Buffalo every day on WBFO The Bridge. Listen at WBFO 88.7 HD2 or W-NED 94.5 HD2 or stream it from wbfothebridge.org or the WBFO The Bridge mobile app.
This is Buffalo What's Next, where we have conversations with the community about moving forward. To have your voice heard, press the Talk to Us button on the WBFO app, and we'll work to get your questions and comments on the air. Join us on Twitter @WBO or email us at news@wbfo.org. Together, we'll have the conversations that are needed. This is WBFO, your NPR station.
And good morning. This is Dave Debo. For the balance of the program today, we're going to be talking again about the city of Buffalo's redistricting. It was contentious when it was first unveiled. It was certainly contentious at a large public hearing back in August with about 200 people there. And it was contentious when, after that hearing, the mayor and the city council decided to go ahead with the plan anyway, despite a lot of opposition, opposition that had threatened a lawsuit. Now that lawsuit has been filed, so we bring back attorney Adam Bojack for the Our City Buffalo Action Group. Adam, thanks for being here.
Thank you again for having me.
Let's talk a little bit about this suit. Eventually, we will recap the history. We will talk a little bit about what it means for Buffalo's east side with allegations, at least, of minority representation being diluted as a result of this plan. But I want to just start with what the lawsuit is requesting and why you are filing it.
So, what we are requesting was called a preliminary injunction. And what we are saying is that the process was not followed legally. And so, therefore, the results of the process should not be put into effect. The district maps that were passed and put into law, they should be held. And-- And at least for now, until we can get to the bottom of what actually happened. So a permanent injunction would be the final thing that we would ask for. But at least for right now, the first thing we're asking for is, hey, let's just put these aside until we can get to the bottom of everything.
This buys you time, basically.
In a sense, because as, as many will point out, the, the common council races are going to be happening next year and they will be using this new map in theory. And so we need to make sure that any maps they use next year are legal. And so our legal arguments in this case are that the process was not followed properly, therefore, these maps should not be put into effect. So we are asking the courts to step in and say, we can't use these maps.
Has the injunction been granted yet? That's still all to be seen, right?
That's correct, that's correct. So we just filed yesterday and we have to follow the, the normal procedure in Erie County Supreme Court. And so we will get assigned a judge, we don't have that, as far as I know, as of, you know, walking in here today. But we will get assigned a judge, we will get a court date, and we will go from there.
You're filing it because you say the process wasn't correct or is it the end result? Is it the actual maps that you don't like?
This is not about the maps themselves at this point. This lawsuit is pointing out the fact that the, the common council, the mayor, the citizens' commission that was impaneled by the common council, they didn't follow state and local law, the municipal home rule law, the Buffalo City Charter. These rules are in place that tell you what to do every single step of the way and how you should, how you should take, do this process. And over and over and over again, in this process that we saw this year, they fell short of those rules.
I have a so what argument or a devil's advocate argument. As long as the maps are everything they're supposed to be, and I understand that you have some problems with that, we will get there. But as long as the maps are everything they're supposed to be, why does the process matter?
The process matters because the people of Buffalo, who are affected by these maps, they have a right to know that their elected officials are acting within the boundaries of the law. And if they cannot rely upon that, then they cannot rely upon the maps that are the result of that process.
So it's not as if you're saying, gee, there wasn't public input?
That's part of it, that absolutely is part of it. There are rules in place that say you have to advertise your, your meetings ahead of time, you have to post broadcasts of them, you have to post minutes of them, you have to, you have to be open and transparent from the start to the finish. And over and over and over again, as I said, they fell short of that, they did not follow the laws. And so how can we, as the residents of Buffalo, trust that these maps are everything that they need to be?
In August, there was a large public hearing, about 200 people, but the website that had the district maps on it was set up, what, one, two days before that?
So this is, yeah, one thing I would, I would love to tell everybody listening is to go read the petition and especially the expert report that breaks all these things down in detail. But yes, that was one thing that our expert noticed is the, the website that was created for the redistricting was created after they had already done all the work. And that's something that we've, we've pointed out in our, our legal arguments.
I'm confused, they couldn't have done the work before the maps were ready, right?
Well, they didn't tell anybody they were doing the work. That's the, that's the, that's the essence here, is they did everything behind closed doors and then they were putting it out there after it was already done. There was no opportunity for public input.
You wanted to have people help design the maps on the, on the front end.
We wanted to have input. We, we, we've, you know, been very open about that, is that we had alternatives. And another argument that we've made is that the, the common council through Corporation Council told us that the time for that was past. But the problem was that we were never given that opportunity when they said we were supposed to. They said, you know, the, the legal avenue to present alternatives was with the citizens' commission. However, nobody knew when the citizens' commission was doing their work until after they were already done. So they, they, they blocked the access to the process that they said we needed to have access to.
You're an attorney, you do what the law lets you do. Is the procedural protest or the procedural question, is this lawsuit or this request for an injunction, on procedural grounds because there are enough people that don't like the end result and the process is the only part you can challenge?
It's not necessarily the case, it's just that when it's, when we have our, our expert report who looked at everything from start to finish, he also makes a lot of other arguments and he has some very detailed analyses about outcomes and, and other things that are certainly part of the overall conversation here. But as attorneys, we are looking at the procedure because if, the, the details are the most important thing, the democracy is in the details, as our lead counsel said yesterday. And when the details are not followed, we can't trust the democracy. And so putting aside all the results, we need to look at how it happened in the first place. And that's, that's where we're focused right now. Because if, in the very unlikely instance that we went back, we do this over again and we end up with the same map, but everybody gets the public input involved, then, okay, maybe that's, we would, we would settle for that. But with, with, when they, when they, when they close everybody out of the process, there's no openness, there's no transparency, and then we end up with a map that looks the way it does, we have a problem with that.
I can hear the people in City Hall, the city council members, perhaps Mayor Brown, who advocated for this process, saying, wait a minute, Adam, there was a public hearing, 200 people were there. How can you argue that there wasn't public input?
Because they specially designed it that way. They did the literal bare minimum according to the law. And that is only true of those public hearings. Like I said, there's open meetings law, there were, things were supposed to be posted a certain amount of time in advance. None of the, none of the commission meetings that we are, only one of them was finally posted, it was the last one. And they, they put this process together in a way that legally it appeared to do the bare minimum. But 10 years ago, this is something our expert reported, that 10 years ago, they were much more open, they posted things on the website right away. And even then, they said, we fell short, we need to do better 10 years from now. And they did much, much worse than they did 10 years ago.
Adam Bojack is here, he's an attorney with the Our City Action Buffalo Group, the University District Block Club, and nine other people that have filed a suit against the city's common council redistricting plan. And we're talking a little bit about that, it was obviously contentious from the beginning, you had threatened a lawsuit before, now the lawsuit is here. We're talking about the council districts that will not necessarily be on the ballot, obviously, this November, but a year down the road. So there's still some time to, to dig into this process. When, when we continue the discussion in just a little bit, I want to look at specifically what it means for the east side. But first, you've mentioned it twice, you opened the, the door, counselor, I have to ask questions about this now. Your expert report, your expert is Russell Weaver from Cornell. We've had him on this program to talk about these maps. What does he allege in that expert report beyond, beyond just as, as you've outlined it broadly, that the process isn't great?
So one thing, if, if people had the time to, to read the report, is it extensive and it is thorough and it is a, a page turning eye opener. But, but what he has done is sat down and said every single step of the way, this is what they were supposed to do and this is how they fell short of it. So starting from even the impaneling of the commission itself, the appointment of people to the panel took longer than it was supposed to. And then they had to self impose their own deadline and they missed that as well. And, and he is hitting every single thing that they were supposed to do. He also breaks down, you know, Mr. Weaver is a geographer by trade.
Yeah.
And he is doing detailed statistical analysis of the map as it was, the map as it will be, differences between those two maps and how it affects residents in those districts. And it is, is shocking.
And that, that to me is maybe more interesting, maybe not more relevant during the legal proceedings. But the substance of the protest, rather than just the procedural, hey, they didn't follow the right process. What do you, by you, I mean the plaintiffs, allege went wrong with the end result?
Well, the petitioners are just saying, we got shut out of this process. Because if, as I said, as I said before, they didn't get to meaningfully participate. And that's, you know, there, there are, every, every single petitioner in this, in this lawsuit has a verifiable, unique injury to them. But one common thing across all of them is that they didn't get to take part. A lot of these people found out after it was already happening, after it was almost over. And they said, well, I, as a resident of Buffalo, I have a right to take part. And they were shut out or they weren't listened to. When, when the mayor puts out a press, a press statement saying that, you know, the hundreds of people who put in public comments and the thousand people that signed a, a petition saying this is wrong, and he said that's not a significant number.
Did not, his exact words, did not represent a significant amount of Buffalo's population.
Right, right. So then what number would have been good enough for him? I don't believe there is one. I don't believe there is one. Because it, it seems like this process was set up and carried out in a way that this was already decided long before anybody got involved and especially before anybody in the public did.
The legal action is filed by Our City Action Buffalo, the University District Block Club, and nine individuals, you just touched on that. Each of these nine, in order for there to be standing, in order for you to be able to bring this legal proceeding, each of the nine have to say, I'm someone who has been harmed by the injustice we allege here. In addition to the expert report, the court documents also include an affidavit from one of those people. Harper Bishop, we've had on the program here to talk about the issue before. What's that statement, that affidavit say?
So it's, it's quite long, of course, I wouldn't be able to recite the entire thing. But what Harper lays out is a timeline from his point of view on how he really did try to get involved in the process. He continued to reach out to certain people within the common council and the chambers and, and the confusing or misleading or outright incorrect responses that he got at many steps during the process. So I, I credit Harper for raising the awareness because without Harper and, and Our City Action Buffalo, many people in the city would not have known about what was going on. But even then, those efforts were stymied over and over and over again. And so in, in Harper's affidavit, it lays out perfectly in, in order, all the efforts that he made and where those were, were rebuffed.
And in order for you to bring this to court, he and others have to say, I was harmed by this. What is the alleged harm?
But as I said, every single person has an individual harm.
A different, okay.
Correct. So, you know, there's a, a one who says, in my district, as a, as a Latina woman, my voting power will be decreased because of this, because of the new map. There, there are some people who say, in my district, as a black person, my, my voting power will be decreased. There's one person who says, my, my neighborhood clubs and groups are going to be split down the middle and they harm the, the, the local community by dividing us between two districts. There's one who mentions the, the lack of language access during the entire process. Everything was done without language accessibility. And so that's, that harmed this person and many others in similarly situated. And so these are very, very compelling affidavits and arguments.
Those were the arguments that I think we needed to get to, the, the idea that not just the process, but the end result has some harm in it. Let's dig further into that when we return. Adam Bojack is here, he represents the Our City Action Buffalo Group and the University District Block Club and nine other people who are saying that the city council's redrawing of city council districts didn't follow proper process, that there was harm in there, including perhaps the dilution of minority representation. We'll get to that part right after this when we return. This is Buffalo What's Next on WBFO.
PBS Kids fun and educational content is available wherever you are in Western New York whenever you want. Live stream the channel at W N E D dot org slash PBS Kids. And while you're there, you can play games, watch videos from your favorite shows like Daniel Tiger's Neighborhood, Molly of Denali, and Almas Way. And you'll find resources for parents and teachers. Visit W N E D dot org slash PBS Kids today.
It's one thing to love public media, but it's a special thing to support it. Consider this, if you've got a car you don't need anymore, or you've got one that's simply too expensive to repair, arrange to donate it to Buffalo Toronto Public Media. It's easy for you, pickup is free, and it could be worth hundreds of dollars in support. Here's how to get started. Go to W N E D dot org slash vehicles.
This is Buffalo What's Next, where we have conversations with the community about moving forward. To have your voice heard, press the Talk to Us button on the WBFO app and we'll work to get your questions and comments on the air. Join us on Twitter at WBFO or email us at news@W B F O dot org. Together, we'll have the conversations that are needed. This is WBFO, your NPR station.
And this is Dave Debo. Today, we are talking about the Buffalo City Council districts, the way that we were drawn, and now, as of yesterday, the lawsuit that seeks, seeks an injunction to try and stop them. Attorney Adam Bojack is here representing the Our City Buffalo, I'm sorry, Our City Action Buffalo Group and nine other individuals who allege certain amounts of harm, say that the process just wasn't fair to them. And that gives you, I think, the right or the standing to take it to court and say, look, these people were harmed, these people have a legitimate beef, let's at least halt the process. Because of the premise of this program, because of, I think, the attention that the east side has gotten, I want to drill down specifically into a couple of the related harms that are alleged in the paperwork. Minority representation. It's diluted, you say, because of these new maps.
Yes, and they were actually diluted because of the previous maps as well, I do want to make that clear. These, these were poorly drawn 10 years ago. And so what we wanted to.
But you can't, you can't challenge 10 years ago, can you?
We cannot, we cannot. But the continuing harm is still there. And so doubling down on those maps by pretty much just changing a couple of things around the edges and then repassing them, that is continuing the harms that were caused 10 years ago. And so that's, that's part of the reason why we wanted to have public voices in the room to have an influence on this process. Because people were harmed 10 years ago and they might not have known it then, but we've been raising awareness recently and we're seeing redistricting in this, across the state and across the country is becoming a bigger, bigger topic, people are paying more attention. So they should have more say in that process.
If the law says that each district has to represent a certain amount of people, how do you dilute minority representation? What is it that went on here that you say hurts the amount of people who have city council connections?
So there's a lot, as I said before, in the expert report. I will do my best to summarize. Mr. Weaver's very, very detailed statistical analysis. But there are different computations that he has done to show that in a certain district, he would look at the core, the, the center of that district and say, this core is 40% of this race, 30% of this race, and then, you know, and the rest mixed of, of others. And then if that the core, it looks like that, then the overall district should also closely reflect that. But we're seeing that that's not the case. So if the core in a district is, is 40% African American, but then the overall district has 60% white people, then that's diluting and, and it's, it's cracking that core of the district. So it's, it's a way to lessen the voting power of the, the core of that district.
And the law that governs redistricting says that each district should relatively speaking be homogeneous?
The laws that govern this are in the city charter. So there are rules that they have to follow. You, you mentioned the one where, yes, they must be generally the same size as far as population, and that's a really easy one to hit. But the, the voting age population also matters as well. And so Rusty does some more analysis on that to say, we're, we're moving people of voting age out of this district into another one and it changes the balance of power in that district. So, you know, we, we looked at the districts, and this is interesting, too. The, the maps that came out of the commission were changed by the, the common council before they passed them. And they, as I mentioned.
Which, let's be clear, was within their rights.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. Which is interesting, though, because that was when they were telling us that the time to present alternatives had passed already.
We don't have time to change it and then you allege they changed it.
Correct, correct. So they actually took the commission's map that was the final one that they said, this is what the city should pass. And they actually made it less equitable. They, they changed a couple districts from one, I'm sorry, voting districts, you know, on the granular level. They changed a couple of things around the edges of the larger districts and they made them less equitable. They flipped one of them from plurality black to plurality white. And, and, you know, these are serious, serious consequences. And this is why the process needs to be followed properly. Because had the people in these districts, the people in these neighborhoods been able to take part in the process, they would have said, I'm sorry, that, that's, that's not right, we need to do something different.
Tell me that again, under the current districts as drawn, in effect, there are some that have a majority minority population? And now, under the proposal, there are less districts that do that?
So that is the correct. So that is the, that's, that's correct. That's correct. Not, not necessarily majority-minority, but it's, we're looking at pluralities or majorities.
Okay.
And so I'm, I'm trying to summarize some very deep analysis.
Let's be plain, you are not the geographer that did this analysis.
Correct.
You just included it in the legal papers. I get it. But you're also the guy that's in front of me, so that's why--
Oh, absolutely.
I'll, I'll put an asterisk on it and say, you're not the expert, but you can at least summarize the expert.
Yes. So as, as the computations show, the, the new maps are less equitable than the ones we already had, which were already quite inequitable. Another thing I do want to highlight is they are diluting the voting power of the Hispanic and Latinx population in Buffalo as well. So they were already diluted 10 years ago when they were split on the Lower West Side. And it's getting worse with the new ones, because there's, like I said, they're moving things around the edges, and, and by doing so, they're, they're diluting the power of that vote as well.
One of the other things that the charter requires is that, that the districts are somewhat contiguous, that they don't have odd frog legs, or some have called, on the congressional level, gerrymandered districts have been called the earmuff district, that stretches from way over here to way over here with a thin strip connecting them back and forth. Do you contend that not only are certain voting populations spread out, but there was basic gerrymandering? That districts were drawn in order to benefit existing elected officials?
That is absolutely part of many of our affidavits. Because the people that live in these districts that are represented by these, these council members are saying, you know, they're doing this to protect their own power in their own seat, rather than help their residents. And I, I think anybody who looks at the map and the way that these districts are drawn, objectively, you could say that that doesn't look normal, it doesn't look right. And of course--
Something is a basic circle, square, polygon, but then has a dog leg to make sure it includes a neighborhood for the sake of the incumbent.
Absolutely. And that's what happened 10 years ago. And, and, you know, Mr. Weaver did an analysis of the compactness of the districts. And he actually pointed out that out of the five public maps that we have seen, the ones from the commission, the one that was finally passed, including the two others that he himself had put together previously as alternative options, out of all the maps that have been out there, the one that they passed was actually the least equitable, the least compact. It was the worst one of all five in so many different categories.
I understand you said earlier that your, your opposition is procedural.
Correct.
Does an argument like, hey, they gerrymandered the heck out of this, fly? I hate to tell you, Adam, I think gerrymandering exists, and I, I think courts have kind of said it's okay that it does, right?
Well, and that's not one of our current legal arguments.
Okay.
It'd be interesting to see how in the future--
That's fighting an uphill battle, clearly, I would think.
We're, yeah, we're not interested in, in taking on that fight at this moment. We're, we're focused on the procedure, because it was so inherently flawed that if, if we actually do the procedure the proper way, we wouldn't have gerrymandered maps. So it kind of takes care of itself.
Ah, okay. All right. The other area I want to touch on, because it again has relevance to the whole discussion of minority representation, language access. Were they under a mandate to include all of their notices in Spanish, for example?
Well, it, it's not even whether it's mandated or not. It's because the people in the city need it, and they know that they do. So we have people in our districts, especially in the Upper and Lower West Side, I mean, there are dozens of languages spoken. And how are these people supposed to meaningfully take part in the process if they don't understand what's going on? There's no outreach, there's no postings in, in a language that they recognize. There's no translation during the common council sessions. We had one of our, our speakers during one of the, the public hearing in, in June, you know, they, they gave their remarks all in Spanish. And I can't imagine many people understood what they said, because there was no translation session.
But as I recall, that was the point. They wanted to say--
Exactly.
Hey, you don't understand me, because guess what? There is no translation here.
Exactly, exactly. It's pointing out a, a great oversight on, on the part of the people running the process. And it, it, it goes back to the idea that if they really wanted public participation, they would have gone out of their way to ensure it and, and put people in place that could help pass along these translations and messages into communities that might not otherwise be able to get them.
What is the legal obligation for public participation? Because again, I, I picture people in City Hall seeing this, hearing it, reading it, and saying, we had a public hearing, Adam. Is, is it required that the public hearing have language access? Is it required that things get drawn a certain way? Or can, if, if you're protesting the process, can they just say, we held a hearing?
So whether they held the hearing or not, it, it really comes back to the, the responsibility that they owe, whether it's legal or not, it doesn't matter. They owe the responsibility for openness and transparency. And if you don't have language access, you're not being transparent, you're not being open. So it's, it, this is not something we're, you know, a legal hill we're trying to die on. It's, it's a, a moral one, that, that it's a responsibility they owe to the people of Buffalo.
Now, that to me is really interesting, because I picture a judge looking at it from strictly a legal perspective, no?
Well, that's, that's, that's only one of many deficiencies. It's not as if, you know, that's the only thing they did wrong. And, and so, you know, the, the process, as I said, from start to finish, has been deficient in almost every way. And so one thing there, we have many different claims in our petition. So it's, it's not as if, if one of them falls, the entire thing falls apart.
All right. And if people want to read that petition, it is up online at the ourcitybuffalaction.com/redistricting. Am I right?
It's Our City Action Buffalo. Yes, yeah. And they, if they want to find that on Twitter as well, and there is, the, the public can read filed petitions. I know some of the people have been posting the entire petition on, online as well. It's, it's all publicly available.
It's out there, sure. What happens next? What judge do you go before? When does he or she decide? How does this proceed?
We are waiting for that appointed judge. They will be assigned to the case probably within the next couple of days, and then we will get a court date from their chambers, probably within the next three to four weeks, we assume. And if we need relief sooner than that, we will take care of that. But at this point, once the judge is assigned, we are full speed ahead.
And if the judge says halt these current districts, does he or she then say, go back to the drawing board? Or, or is there something? Do you have to say that? Do you have to ask for new maps? Or can the judge say, this plan did not work, do this?
That's up to the judge in many ways. We, we, we have asked for a certain relief in our petition. And one of that is that we want them to annul the legislation and have them start this process over again. Because doing it right, it doesn't matter how much time it takes, you have to do it right. So that is certainly, our number one request of a judge is to, let's do this the right way.
Right. So if this gets heard in, say, November, a judge makes a ruling theoretically in December, there's enough time, do you think, before elections in the following November to take care of this and redraw these things?
I think so. I think so. And what the judge could do, and I've seen in other cases, other municipalities, is they could impose new deadlines as part of the process, say, because our, as we said in our petition, there are certain deadlines that are part of the redistricting process, the reapportionment process. And it says, you have to do things by a certain date. And of course, they missed all those deadlines this time around for different reasons, but, you know, those were missed. But the judge could say, as part of this ruling, you need to have X done by this date. You need to have Y then done by this date, and then Z done by this date. So that's, that's certainly something that could happen as well.
I recall in the New York State Assembly races, the Senate races, and in Congress this past year, there were two sets of primaries. Because the districts weren't drawn in time, there was the traditional primary, and then the one for those districts because they didn't meet the certain deadlines.
Correct.
So theoretically, the election dates could also be affected here, theoretically.
That's right. That's right. They could push the city, the common council primaries back to accommodate any changes.
You're an advocate for your position. 10 seconds left. I don't think you're going to say, gee, we're going to fail, Dave, but how optimistic are you?